I'd like to call this meeting to water. Please join me in the flag of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Welcome and thank you for coming. Did everybody hear me okay? All right. If you can't hear me, just do this or something and I'll speak up. Just a few words regarding community participation in our meeting tonight. When we address the recommendations for back to school, I will hear from the school committee members first. Then, once I've heard from all of the school committee members, I will open it up to the public. I will ask the public to raise your hand. I will call on you. I'll ask you to state your name and stand, and then you may speak. I'll also ask that you only speak if you have something new that you want to contribute. If somebody else has said the same point that you want to make, please know that we heard it, okay? We are all here to listen. Please make your comments brief so everybody has a chance to speak. And lastly, I want to ask everybody here to be respectful of your fellow community members. We all want what's best for our kids. If tempers happen to flare or someone speaks disrespectfully, I will use my gavel to bring us back to a common respectful discussion. Hopefully, that will be unnecessary, and I thank you in advance for your cooperation. Now, I'll take the role. Janice Dykett.
Present.
Jimothy West.
Present.
Kelly Hooper.
Present.
Joe Patrowski.
Here.
Amelie Ruh.
Yes.
And I am here as well. Any adjustments to the agenda?
None this evening.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of August 4th as read nor with corrections.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. All right. All those in favor? It all passes unanimously. Reports. Superintendent report.
I sent my report out in advance, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have no additions to for that. I do want to go through the appointments. We have two appointments. Michael Cloudier will be a special education tech three at the high school, and Henry Trujillo will be the computer ed tech district wide. And so, for the first time, at least in my tenure here, we have a full complement of technology people. We have, we've now hired the second person, so we have the director. We have our two techs.
Awesome.
Yes. No resignations, no retirements, no transfers.
All right.
Any update on guidance?
Guidance, interviews tomorrow.
Oh, awesome.
Is that still true? Yes. Okay. Well, welcome to our two new employees. As far as a committee chair report, I would just like to briefly discuss who we would like our delegate to be.
Do you want to do the hearing or wordless?
Well, I thought we could just pick the person and then we could nominate that person.
Okay.
Not really.
I nominate Joe.
I second that nomination. Is that something you're willing to do, Joe?
I'm willing to do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll do it officially in new business, but I just wanted to... Anybody want to be the alternate if Joe can't make it?
It's time to school up here.
All right. So I guess I nominated as the alternate. Okay. Good. I said I can't. It's during the day, I believe.
It is mostly virtual.
Okay, great. All right. And that's all I have for tonight for that. So, committee reports. Finance.
Yes. Kelly and I just got caught up. We did warrant 26, 27. I will email these to you and Colleen. 2, 3, 4, and 4A. We did have questions on loans. That's why that's not in there. Payroll, 26B, 1, 1B, 2, 3, 3A, 3B, 4, 4A, and school nutrition, 13, 14, and 15, which means I believe we can now close out thus far, at least last year, and go from there.
Awesome. And how soon can you send it to me?
I'm doing it right now.
Awesome.
Thank you. Good work, ladies. For the policy committee, we met again for the first time this summer, this evening, and we went over two new policies for first reading for the next meeting and four policies for second reading, which we will do at our next meeting. Negotiations? No, nothing. Okay. Any other committee reports? Nope. Okay. Administrative reports?
They were all in the packets.
Yep. Thank you. Any questions, comments?
Thanks for all the work this summer.
Yeah, really. Great job, you guys.
I had said to the administrators that I wanted them to do a sort of a link here, administrative reports, we'll get you ready to go to school. And I thought they all did a great job. Appreciate the information.
Okay. Old business. I will entertain a motion to approve the following recommendations from the 18th superintendent regarding back-to-school considerations for the 2021-2022 school year. Do I need to read them all or can we just say as of printed?
You can say as printed.
In the packets.
Should you read just... because not everyone has... do they have copies?
Do you want me to read it?
No, everybody does not have a copy.
I'm sorry.
Not everyone does. Everyone doesn't have copies, so it should be...
Oh, okay. Five-day-a-week for in-person learning. No remote learning option. Masks are optional, except on the bus, which is federally mandated. Visitors not permitted in schools during school hours. Vaccinated vendors are permitted, including but not limited to OTPT speech. After-school clubs and activities permitted in the buildings. Sports will continue as usual. Physical distancing is not mandatory. Open houses will be permitted. Students that are symptomatic will be seen by the nurse. Parents are encouraged to keep students home if symptomatic. Each school will have an isolation room. Close contacts can test negative to come back to school.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, discussion. And I'm going to start... The way I'm going to do the discussion is I'm going to start with the vice chair, then I'm going to go by seniority, and then if I have to, by alphabetical order. So everybody knows there's no... that's how I'm doing it. Okay. First chair, you're first. Jan.
Okay. So first, thank you to everyone who has reached out via either email, messenger, in-person, everything else. There's nothing we really do want more than to get people involved in the school, so thank you. I would like to make an amendment to what we are working on right now due to the fact of always fluctuating and recent DOE and CDC guidelines and updates. The amendments that I would like to make would be... Well, masking on the school buses aren't even on there, so that's fine. Students would mask upon entering the school building and when passing in hallways. Masks would be... masks in the classroom with mask breaks permitted when students are working at their desk or their workspace and at least three feet from peers. And pool testing. To me, that goes hand in hand with the masking with what CDC is recommending. And I also would like to see us revisit this issue at each school committee meeting so that it can be talked about with ever-fluctuating data from the state coming in in September with how many people are vaccinated, county updates, and all the updates. I would like it to be talked about. And if we don't have any new information, we can move on. But I would like to have that happen. Teachers, students, and parents cannot have another year like we had last year. We did it. Winthrop did it well. I, again, appreciate all of the information, but I would like to amend that as well.
Can I just suggest one other change?
Sure.
Because I don't think we can... M on our list is close contacts can test negative to come back to school. That may or may not be a provision of pool testing, but it's... My understanding, it's one of the things we've been looking at. We can't unilaterally make that decision. Once there are... somebody's tested positive and close contacts have been identified, then their return to school is controlled by the CDC, not us. So I would remove that. But it might go hand in hand with the decision to do pool testing.
It certainly mitigates the quarantine, yeah?
Yeah.
Anything else that you would like to say?
I don't think so.
So can I just add? I mean, these... some of these things are sort of... I don't want to get too picky about this because there's still... this is not like... These are the major overarching umbrella type things. I had sent the administrative... I mean, sorry, the school committee a memo today. And I waited till today to do the memo because things felt like they could potentially change right up to the last minute. We heard from the commissioner last week. She said, "As of Monday, 9:00 blah blah PM, this is what I can tell you." And it changes. But... So some of the things, particularly with respect to contact tracing. This is already happening. I just want to be sure the public about it. All the seating on the buses is assigned. Seating in the cafeterias, we started doing this in the spring, that's assigned. I think the more we can be finite about where kids are and things like that, then we can minimize. Last year, we had a lot of situations where... And I want to reiterate, we said the community was amazing last year in terms of, as a superintendent, I listen to what some of my superintendents had to deal with, and Winthrop's community was amazing. But there were a number of times, or there were a couple of times at least last year where, you know, it was a wide net that was cast over the whole close contact group. And so, whole classes had to quarantine when it really only needed to be, in most people's opinion, one or two kids. And, you know, that, I know that was really frustrating for a number of people and understandably. I was frustrated by it. That's when I sort of first contacted the CDC and said, "Do we have any flexibility at all? Can we, you know, is there any way?" And they just said, "Unless you can be more definitive about distances and who was where." And I said, "Okay, we can. We will do that." So assignment, seats in the cafeteria. Obviously, classrooms are already set up that way. But I think anytime we can be more specific about where kids are and who's next to each other and that type of stuff specifically, then we're going to be in much better shape.
Joe.
I'm very glad that we brought this topic up in the manner which we have tonight by amendment yet because I certainly could not vote for it as it was presented. I am a safety-first person. I've been since the beginning of this discussion. I'm not claiming that they have not been. That's not a good point. I just have been unwieldy with my hardcore safety position that unfortunately, we've got to take the high road. We've got to take the correct road. And I think we can get through it this year or as long as we have to. I plan to join maybe some people in this room in being first to get my booster shot. There's no ifs, buts, or maybes. And I'm following the science. And I don't know what else to do, but I do believe in people's rights. And as I said to people, that's their choice not to do things. If they can do it, fine. But quite frankly, with what we have for a situation, we've got to be very strong about it. So, thank you for all the comments that I've just heard.
Kelly.
Thank you. So I spent some time this morning watching the presentation from the DOE to the nurses that happened yesterday. And one of the big things that I took away from that was that we cannot negatively test back into school if we're not doing the pool testing.
Forever.
And I would strongly adjust to do that. I think that that's in the best interest of the community, the school community as a whole. I think it's the easiest way to catch things early and to be able to keep kids in school as much as possible.
Timothy.
Yeah. I've struggled with this topic. I've talked to a lot of people. I have my personal thoughts on it. I'm trying not to get stuck there. I've been asking both sides. My biggest concern, I really wish the community would just accept this, no matter what decision we make, is that we've had two high school students in the state of Maine last year commit suicide because of quarantining and isolation. Acadia Hospital has seen a 50% increase in children with suicidal thoughts. We've seen a 31% from the Maine CDC 12-17-year-olds with depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts. 24% in the 5- to 11-year-olds. And I think that is real data. It's not just me coming up with it. I went US CDC, Maine, Acadia Hospital. These are real data. This is a real concern. I... it's not the mask. Whatever we feel is safe, the mask, that's not the issue. The quarantining is my concern. Kids need to be in school. Parents can't be taking days off from school to take care of kids, and kids can't be at home. There's unsafe situations at home. I think we're putting more kids at risk being at home and especially the older kids. It's just not safe. Their thoughts are really... it's unsafe. And we need to start focusing on the real things. We have two kids. I won't read their names, but two kids last year killed themselves in high school because of the isolation. And that's my biggest concern, is the quarantining right now. So as far as amendment, yeah, I think I agree with the amendments, but I just want to caution. We've got the quarantining, the data, it's affecting kids. It's really bad.
Okay. Can I piggyback on that?
Yes, of course.
So, and I know a lot of people that you sent information to me and I forwarded to the school committee, the theme is very consistent. Regardless of where you are on this issue about the concern about social, emotional well-being of our students. Our administrative team recognized that way back last spring. And as we were looking at the new monies, new federal monies that we had this year, we... the focus was on adding additional support at all of the schools or in the system to deal with social, emotional issues. We've added an additional social... We've added an additional guidance council to grade school. And we've added other staff. Because the other thing we recognized secondarily to that, but just as important, was the, no matter how well people did last year with remote teaching and that type of thing, it's not the same. And so, we're going to have a pretty substantial level of digression, I guess is the best way I can say this. So we recognize that that's going to be the case. And so, we have identified resources over the next two years that we will have additional support in our buildings to address and to identify and address students who are behind. And we suspect it'll be a larger number than it has been in the past for our community. So I share that for a number of reasons. One, to support what Tim's saying, because I think we all recognize that and a concern about the social, emotional well-being of our children and our parents and our teachers. But also, it's the reason why... Probably the second biggest issue that I've been thinking back on and it's tiny compared to the whole masking question, is about no remote learning. There are people who still would like us to have remote learning. That's not possible because we just don't have the... We can't address all of the issues. We can't address the social, emotional issues and the number of people who we knew were already planning to come back. And we were going... and they said, "If you're back five days, we're coming back." If you're, you know, if you're going to make a mask, you know, whatever, that's a mixed bag. But the five days a week was a big thing. So we can't address all those issues. We... and we chose the administrative team as a school committee to focus on getting that additional support for our social, emotional needs and our academic needs. And it made it... we don't have the ability to also do remote learning. And quite frankly, I... while I understand that there may be some individual cases that we need to deal with, to me, we'd have individual cases even if there wasn't COVID. We need to... we'll look at those. But I agree with everything that Tim just said and others have implied that the best place for our kids to be is right here in school. And... That's really good. I'm sorry. Don't get me wrong.
That's okay. I think Jan would like to...
Yeah. Do you mind if I just...
Yeah.
The other thing I do just want to add as well, and I hope everyone in the audience does know too, the steps that the school has taken for air quality system in our schools that, you know, we have O2 prime and is it the Ares?
Yes.
In the areas that we couldn't get those machines in there. These are hospital-grade machines. They are tested and retested by Siemens to make sure that they are working. So there are other things that are in our classrooms as well to help protect staff and students when they are taking those mask breaks sitting at their desks. Sorry. Amelie, what is yours, my dear?
I'm also much more comfortable with the amended version than the original version. And I think the masking isn't a good compromise. My biggest concern is still the grade schoolers. I don't know if there's any... with the spacing, I don't know. Grade schoolers aren't the best at being hygienic or keeping their personal space. So I don't know if there's any way we could differentiate a little bit between the grade school and the middle school and high school. But I think overall, this is a... the amendment is a much better plan.
Are you talking about the physical distancing piece?
Yes.
And isn't it saying here that we ask that if they stay... If they're not within three feet, then they would need to mask too? Teachers have learned a lot over... I mean, everyone's learned a lot. I know in my own personal classroom, I still want my kids to sanitize when they come in the room. I still want them to be three to six feet apart because I can do that in my room. And if they're going to be working together, then yes, your masks are on.
Yeah.
And they don't come off. So yes, I agree. And I even think maybe as we go along too, there may be the high school, if a lot of kids are vaccinated, you know, is that going to make a difference? So, yeah, I agree.
So one of the things that... one of my meetings related to this was with our association leadership, and there was that whole issue, because the grade school, talking about PE. I happen to have a PE teacher here tonight. And library and music and, you know, those are places that are being permitted to assemble. And there's different guidelines on being in school or out of school. This is a message to say shut your phones off. But also related, you know, that whole sense of... Initially, the question was if we stuck with the no masking thing, can those places, like our curriculum extension classes, be, you know, say they will have the mask? And my answer was absolutely. And... but this actually makes it not as much of an issue. And also, just, I brought this for a reason. This is not in case today you get rowdy. This is really... I walked around the grade school yesterday, the day before, whatever. And just, I mean, three feet is not far. And I did set all those chairs up three feet apart. People have moved them, so I can't do much about that. Just to kind of prove the point, but I was in the classrooms. The classrooms that were set up, they're already, I mean, with almost no effort, no intentionality behind it, they're already three feet. So to be able to put our kids in the classrooms and have them be three feet apart should be a non-issue. So it just... it's amazing to me sometimes. And so I think we can do that. I think we can do it easily. I can do it. I think we can do it without being terribly restrictive. I, you know, I don't know. It's just... And the irony is, not that I'm trying to say I told you so to the school committee or the administrative team, but this is... This recommendation is exactly what I said last spring, we brought in this stuff. Before, I knew it was a federal mandate to say the buses have to be. We have to have them in assigned seats, and they have to be masked. And that in the hallways, they can be masked. And, oh, I know the other thing was to say related to that. But then the other part was being in the classroom because they could mask break if they were properly distanced, and I didn't know what that was going to be. But there were some, in my discussion with the nurses about this, there was some question about whether or not the middle schoolers and high schoolers or any of the kids, grade school easier to do, if they would wear the masks. Say, you don't... I mean, you have to wear your mask in the hallway. They're like, "Oh, they're not going to do that." I said, "Well, yes, they will." And I promise you, they will. And for this reason, if you don't know this, you should know this. Last year, our middle school students, if you had middle schools last year, they stayed in their classrooms all day long and the teachers moved. Kids hated it. And I heard from parent after parent and teacher after teacher that if we just let those kids move, that would be so much better for everybody. The teachers will have a home base. It was really inconvenient for them. They were amazing in doing that job. So that was the middle school. So at the high school, they went one way. They had the directionals. And so, if you were coming out of the libraries and you had to go to the first room on the left down that corridor, you had to go all the way upstairs, all the way around. That's the way it would work. And again, I've heard repeatedly from staff and from everybody, if we can figure out a way so they don't have to ma... don't have to go in that type of pattern. And that's it. That's the stick. Not this one. But that's the stick we can basically hold over their heads and say, "Guys, you have to mask in the hallways, and if you can't, then we're going to have to look at ways to restrict your movement and whatever." And Amelie can speak to this probably the best, but I just had heard from student after student, from teacher after teacher, that, "Please let us move about."
Yes.
Yeah. So I'm very confident that, given the choice of wear your mask and go wherever you want or wear your mask and go in one direction, they will do that. And the students, last year particularly by high school, but the middle school as well, were amazing in how well they pleased themselves. They did not want to have more restrictions or whatever, and they were amazing. And I suspect we'll do the same this year.
Okay. So I wanted to also thank everybody for all of your emails and information, your attachments. I spend a lot of time reading, learning. I've looked a lot more into our filtration system, and it is way better than a HEPA filter. The HEPA filter is one part of five different components, I believe, of our Ares filtration system. So it's even better than that, just to let you know.
And for some reason, all of this, all the paperwork, all the research, that's all in the board packet that's online. So if you want to see the research yourself, it's all there.
I guess I definitely think we should do the pool testing. My biggest concern for families, teachers, kids, like Timothy, is the quarantining and the isolation. I think the only way, the best way to mitigate that is to follow your plan and then we'll keep as many kids and teachers in school as possible. I really don't want to go home and tell my kids, "They're going to have to put a mask on. I'm not going to lie to you. They're not going to be happy with me." But I also think it's really important to continue this conversation. I don't want to... we make the decision now and we never look at it again because things are changing, data is changing. I've been looking up, you know, in Kennebec County, our risks right now are actually fairly low. Our vulnerability level is low compared to most other US counties. Our positive test rate is 2.8%. And I think the threshold for indoor masking for the CDC is over eight. So we're fairly low there. Our infection rate is low at 0.86. And our daily cases is at a moderate level. So if you took out the schools and you just used the CDC guidelines for when you should indoor mask, they had two criteria for that. And one is if you're in what they call high or substantial or high-level risk, which is over 50 cases, new cases, I think on a seven-day average, and also if it's over that 8% for the number of positive tests. So we're doing pretty good in this community right now. So I just want to keep the conversation over because I guess my biggest concern is when do we not wear masks? Like, I know we know when we want to wear masks, but when do we not want to wear masks? So I think we need to have both of those pieces covered. And that's all I want to say for right now. Anybody else need to say anything before I open it up to the panel? Okay. Would anybody like to speak? Is this right here? Can you tell my name?
I'm Dr. Baker, Diana Baker. So I'm a pediatrician here in Winthrop, and I know a lot of familiar faces in the community. I see a lot of your kids, and I tested a lot of your kids this year, partially for COVID. We strongly at Winthrop Pediatrics recommend following the CDC guidelines as well as following the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Maine DOE's recommendation for universal masking in schools. When we talk about keeping our kids the safest from COVID, it's a layered approach. And when we talk about layering, we do this a lot with other things. We do it with car safety, for instance. So when... So, when we want to prevent car accidents and deaths by motor vehicle crashes, we have a lot of things in place. We wear seatbelts, we have speed limit signs, we put our kids in five-point harness, we have stoplights. We have all these things in place to keep our kids and adults as safe as possible in a motor vehicle crash. And we know there are multiple things to do, the same thing for COVID. So, we know hand sanitizers work, we know staying at home when you're sick and getting tested if you're sick is really important. We know that vaccination is a super important part, you know, air filtration in the schools, I'm so excited we're having that here in Lyford. Some schools are not doing that, I'm really excited that they are. But masking is a super important component as well. So, when we look at kind of air filtration versus masking, there was a study released last month that looked at air filtration. It decreased the risk of aerosols in the community or in a classroom by 65%. Masking alone was 72%. But them together, to me, everything that we can to keep our kids safe was a reduction of aerosol by 90%, and that's wonderful. So, that's kind of my big recommendation, is that we use this layered approach to keep our kids as safe as possible. And all of you guys have read the news, we're looking at all these outbreaks, and we're not just talking three kids meets an outbreak. There's many schools in this country that are getting shut down. And as we were talking about, we all want our kids in school, in person. I think that's really important. Now, last year, Lyford did amazing. We had very few full-school shutdowns, like way better than so many other communities. We did unfortunately have to still test a lot of kids because they would have had exposures. And so, they came and saw me and my colleagues, and I would ask the parents, you know, where did the exposure come? Was it at school? Was it at home? And when they told me that it was at school, I was relieved. I told them, your children were masked, the chance that this test will be positive is incredibly low. So, I had zero children that I tested that had a school exposure in the classroom where everybody was masking and ended up becoming positive. So, that's huge, okay? The other big thing, I think, that we've kind of discussed is that the DOE has recommended on their new SOPs of August, about either pool testing or universal masking in the schools. That way, if a student in the classroom has COVID, if the, if the children were three feet apart, which is definitely the plan, and they were wearing their masks the whole time, they will not need to quarantine. And that is, I just can't even tell you how important that is for my families. I'm going to be a mom of a kindergarten, or I want to send my daughter to the safest place possible, I know you guys do too, and I don't want to see them. I don't want to see all your kids. I don't want to, I don't want to swab, stick something in their nose, and wear all this stuff all the time. I want them to not need testing because they're going to be in the school. We want our kids at school. We can't be home 10 days, 15 days. Two, I had one kid that was out, like, 10, three 10-day quarantines within two months, period. They were barely in school for the, for the March and April months, and that's not acceptable. We want our kids here, five days a week, we want them safe and universal masking in school, like almost all the other schools in our community, Calda, Ellis, Society, Green, Monde, Manchester's having their meeting next week, Gus's schools, they're all supporting universal masking. I'm thrilled to hear some kind of changes and thoughts here, and I really, really strongly recommend universal masking for us.
Thank you.
Can I ask her a question? I should?
Yeah, please.
Just, I just want to make sure I get it right.
Yes.
You said if there's pool testing and masking.
They have to, one, if you look at the SOPs from the DOE, the Department of Education released on the 12, they have to have one of four criterias for them. So, pool testing qualified, I believe, if you guys recall. And also, if the school is doing universal masking and the children are three feet separated. They would not need to quarantine if a child in their classroom tested positive. And that's huge. That means they can, the rest of the class can stay, they don't have to be home, remote learning on screens for 10 days.
So, if they're doing, if we do all three of those?
No. No, one of the, the, yeah.
Pool testing or masking.
Correct. I believe.
Yes.
If you look at that YouTube video that I was talking about, they have that right on there that shows that the work of, you know, when you need to quarantine or not. It's one of the slides.
I have, I took a screenshot of it last night.
I have it right here.
But it's also, I was saying earlier, that the, before, the initial motion, and it was the desire of the administrative team, again, just sort of our wish list, not our no list, that kids could test negative, to test by a kid. Because last year, it was the non-option, and it became very evident to us, where we looked at it, that's still not an option. We don't get to determine.
Right.
Once a positive test has happened, it gets, all that gets turned over to the CDC. And so, it's, the other things that we can do as a school that would mitigate the amount of time or who has to quarantine. And I think the big thing is that that whole sense of distancing and making sure that we have assigned seating. So, you don't have a kid who's at the back of the bus, but we don't really know that. We think that, and they tell us that, but we don't know that, and we can't prove it. So, they end up being quarantined. Or you have a kid who's, I don't know, playing with a baseball, softball cleanup type of thing, and that's a different story. But, you know, it really is making sure that, well, actually, we actually did have to, and I appreciate your comments, because we did not comparatively have a lot of days of full school missed. And it was really when we started to tighten things up around assigned seats and those types of things. Assigned seats sounds so bad, nobody's really saying it, but when I, even when I say it, it sounds bad, but it's like, if I'm going to sit, I'm before I sit, or whatever, I'm going to sit next to my buddy, then I'm, I'm good with that. I'm cool with that.
I mean, I can only speak for my kids, but I, you know, my middle school daughter, she got to sit next to all her friends, she was out. She never called her out. Do you have any more questions?
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Erin Weeks, I'm the school nutrition director, and I just have more of a question than a comment. I can understand in the grade school and the middle school how assigned seating in the cafeteria can work, but I can't see how in the high school that's even enforceable. I mean, we don't have a constant supervision in the cafeteria when high schoolers are at lunch, and even with the way we had the desks last year, a lot of times, they would, you know, turn their desk around backwards and be facing each other as they ate, or, you know, fooling around or whatever, close to each other. And I just don't see how, I mean, what are we going to do? Put, put tape on their desk and say, you have to sit there every day? And then who's going to check to make sure they're doing it? It just doesn't seem like that bit is enforceable, so I'm going to be marking.
I would just read it, it's not enforceable. Plus, I will also say, because the cafeteria is never uncovered. Last year, we had to use our ed techs that were hired to be COVID specialists because staff were busy elsewhere in the building. But if the wishes of the committee is we're going to have assigned seating in that cafeteria, we'll have assigned seating in the cafeteria, that the classroom teachers cover, have two in each mall. So, hopefully, I mean, we're going to have junior seating in privs again. So, those students won't be on campus, so limit the number of students eating lunch at any one time down to about 60. And, you know, if the big guy needs to go in and post those, I would imagine.
Amelie?
Um, I'd like to, last year, when I had to sit in the lunchroom, when we had the desks, we, I, from what I saw, we all sat in the same seats every day, just because that's where we, like, wanted to go, because we were sitting with our friends, and we kind of all had our, each friend group had their own little, like, square. So, I think, I don't know, assigned seating is necessary at the high school and the cafeteria because I don't know what kind of tables we will use, because last year, we used, like, desks, and they were cleaned very frequently. But, yeah, I don't know if assigned seating in the cafeteria is a huge concern.
So, yeah, thank you. I think that's, that's kind of what I thought both of you were going to say. But I would just say that it's, I'm not sure that it's, it's going to be the job of the school committee to establish what the expectations are, and then it'll be up to the administrative team, and then the administrators in each building to make sure those are, if that's what happens. So, I, I think we could probably go through 100 scenarios tonight, but we don't have exactly the answer for now. The administrative team is meeting again before school opens, so we will review whatever we need to review, have clarification, whatever we need to clarify. But I think the school committee's proposal is what the school committee is supposed to do, set the parameters.
Teresa? Um, excuse me, just a quick question to confirm, you're talking masking all day long unless you're sitting at your desks, not moving, not doing anything, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I have regarding open house, now that we have this mask decision or amendment, are we still having open house?
Yes.
And if we are, are we requiring everyone who comes in to have a mask?
No. The other part of our recommendation, we explained in our recommendation, is that after-school club activities permitted in the building. So, if it's, I would say that's a bit risky, so I think people who are not, will have to make that decision. But after-school, if people want to come in and have your open houses, and they, they're going to, they're just going to do that. They're not going to be required to, to mask. The real issue, the real discussion that we had, as administrative team anyway, was about how do you make sure the building is, is clean? That's not what I'm looking for, but, you know, to make sure that it's available for the next day. And, but between what we know for cleaning and what we know in terms of the virus ability to live, and what it needs hosts and such, we thought that that was a recommendation we could make. And in trying to be as, I don't know, we try to be as community-friendly in terms of that as we possibly can, and still be safe. So, it's kind of the same thing. It's like, you know, people, I know outdoors and indoors are night and day in terms of the CDC's perspective, but, you know, if you're in basketball or football, you know, this fall, and soccer and other, you know, people are going to, are going to gather, and they're going to gather whatever way they gather. So, open houses are pretty singular events, so that was sort of the sense that we're going to, people can do that. And, and so, yeah, that is part, that is exactly what we're looking at.
Is that sending conflicting messages, though?
I don't, you guys could, I don't know why it is, but I don't think it is.
But open house was not required, like going to school was, but so, people can choose not to come and...
But you're going to have significantly, potentially significantly more people in a small area at an open house than you would if it was just the students and a teacher during the school day.
But again, it's, that's the biggest thing, it's their choice. I, you know, I...
I get that, but last year, we didn't have, and I only saw Will's teacher via Zoom. I never met her in person.
Yep.
And you got to know when going to meet whoever, my son is spending the whole year, which this year, and it just seems to me that we're sending a real mixed message by saying...
So, what the alternative is not have open houses, and I think collectively, that's the worst decision.
We have to get a follow-up, it's Teresa first, and then I'll do you next, okay?
Before?
Yes, go.
I would think that the alternate would be, yes, come and wear a mask, not no mask, no open house.
Where do you draw that line, then?
Yeah, we could talk about that as administrative.
But where do you draw that line? Because he brought up, say, a basketball game. Are you going to require everybody to wear a mask for the basketball game?
If they don't want to quarantine, they should.
Teresa?
Yes, Teresa, go ahead.
Um, when you say they can make the choice not to come, are you saying staff can choose not to come?
No.
So, staff has to be there. So, you're telling staff they have to be there in an environment with hundreds of people, because that's what open houses are, many of whom will be unmasked? I mean, that's a, that's a pretty huge risk. You're asking staff to take, in my opinion.
I'm sorry to disagree, but that's, we don't need to do that here.
Dr. McConnell?
From a, Jennifer McConnell, from a medical perspective, I'd like to make a suggestion for you guys to think about. First of all, when is open house? But like, not a couple weeks into school, right?
Yes, soon. We have schools off it.
30th.
Okay, so pretty quickly, so two weeks. I think one thing we're going to see is, we're going to be able to see what the Delta variant is doing in Kennebec County. It's either going to really increase quickly, like the rest of the state of Maine, and then it's going to be a no-brainer. Anybody going inside is going to be asked to wear a mask, is my understanding. So, I think it likely will be a moot point. Secondly, I don't think it would be wrong, including down the road, I know that one of the goals is to keep volunteers and stuff out during the day, but for adults that are potentially using school facilities, coming to games, et cetera, that are not outside, they can be vaccinated. They're not young, and we, you could just make a blanket statement, we're not going to be checking vaccination status, but we are going to ask you, just like they do now, just like the door says out there, if you're not vaccinated, please wear a mask. And certainly, you know, I go places, I'm fully vaccinated, and if I'm going to be in close quarters, I wear a mask now, because I don't know where people are coming from. So, I would recommend, I think you guys are making an amazing, you're doing an amazing job, making great changes as, you know, I mean, a year ago, we wouldn't think we'd be talking about the Delta variant, so you're doing amazing. But I think not to get too caught up in two weeks from now, because I think it might be a moot point.
Can I just add to that as a contact tracing mine? I'm Melissa, we're the school nurse at the grade school. If we're having open house, which, you know, as, as a parent too, I think it's great, but I think in a safe way. I will be there, you know, in my office, in the nurse's office, greeting people that are coming through. I prefer if they're masked, number one. And if they're in their, in the classroom for more than 15 minutes, it's a school-sponsored thing, if they become positive, who's going to contact Trace? I don't know who they've been around. It's going to be my job to keep everyone safe. So, that's where my head goes. I can, I piggyback on Dr. Jen. You know, I agree with everything she said as well. I think, and, you know, we've always been very open in this community, hence why a lot of people come here and want to be in school systems and work for everyone. And I agree, you guys are doing a great job, and I commend you for, you know, doing some, adding things and tweaking it. So, that's just my, in my brain, that's where it goes, is contact tracing, because I did it all last year, so.
As far as the evidence, I cannot speak for the grade school, because my kids are older, but in most, I can't remember an open house where I spent more than five to 10 minutes in one classroom.
Ah, but I, for me, when people come in my office, are coming into my office, I think it'll probably be more than 10 minutes. I can, I can...
Like I said, I don't know anything about the grade school.
Yeah, and usually, I kind of... If you're not going to think about that, or maybe even do a log, sign in, like when you walk into the teacher's room, sign in and out, that's simple. And that's, you know, and I know it's tedious, I get it, but that's all, I'm just going to...
Would anybody else like to speak? Sure? Okay. Go ahead.
One, I, thanks for changing, making the amendments. It's, I'm Jeanie Rosson, school nurse at the middle school, high school, and I like the changes. The one question I have, or the concern I have, I'm not against pool testing. I think pool testing is certain, I'm not so for pool testing in schools. I think pool testing is probably better in conjugate settings, I think that's what it was kind of devised for, for like colleges, overnight, you know, places where nursing homes, like they don't do it in hospitals, they have the pool testing in other institutions. But I'm on board for pool testing here, if we, if that's the vote of the board. But I will say, the way the current health department is set up, you're looking at us? I cover the high school and the middle school, and pool testing, it's not just the, the idea of just, you send out a survey for all, all parents that want to participate, sign up, and then we, someone, it doesn't have to be a nurse, the key thing, but for some reason, I don't know who else, no one else is volunteering. So, someone has to go and swat every day, if the kids are doing it themselves, they go in a vial, you color, you barcode it, have to put it into computer, FedEx takes it, you get FedEx ported back. Maine's had 101 pool tests done so far this summer, they've only had one positive. So, they've only had to go through the process once in the whole state, so it's, it's new. Then you have to call all those people, you, well, then you, then you binex rapid test that classroom. Well, the long, the short end of this is, we need help. So, either the COVID texts that are hired maybe can start doing some real COVID work, like, like the pooling testing or something, because it's impossible, I will tell you. I, it would be impossible for us to pool test, like 60, 70, ideally, 100% of the middle school and high school kids every two days a week, and do all the other school nurse things. It's just, in addition to, if, if kids aren't pool tested, but there's positives in the school, which there will be unfortunately, then we're going to close contact all those families and call. And I tried personally calling every family, because I felt like, I, I just wanted to. I, I didn't want to email saying, hey, by the way, I, I felt like I wanted to at least call everyone. And those calls take time, as they should. I mean, if I was on the end, so I would say, is, pool testing is good, I'm, I'm happy to buy into it, but we need a pool, we need, we need, we need... we need, we need, we need a person designated to do pool testing.
Dana?
Um, it's not an everyday test. I thought it was a once a week.
No, it's one, it doesn't matter how many classrooms you have. If you have, ideally, you want to, ideally, the, the pool test, you wanna have every kid in the school pool test. Cause that, that's, that's your 100%.
So it is, it is one for each though. Tips usually, usually.
Right, but once a week, one classroom, maybe another week on Tuesday.
Right, so a lot of people have been there, kids are gonna get swabbed every day.
No, no.
I'd be concerned about that, so.
No, you, you divide.
You divide them up. Into pods.
Say Monday, Tuesday. And then you have pods of 10 that go in a certain vial. So then you get a positive back. If you go much more over 10, it's not as sensitive. You don't pick up a single positive. Works well too in sports teams, that are riding buses together and playing sports together. That's another place that pool testing could be done. I don't think that's been talked about at the MPA level. But I know a lot of schools are putting it in place and they do need support.
And if there's a positive, then you, someone most likely asked, right, will have to binex rapid test all those, say randomized 10.
So then you'll take those 10, you'll know which kids were in that 10.
Right.
And then you'll retest those with a, with a rapid. And then if they come back positive, then those have to go get a.
And there is supposedly, I say supposedly, county, a county liaison to help schools specifically with pool testing. I have no idea what that.
What, what they do is they come in, it's like, this is, they come in and show you how to do it and then say, you're doing a great job.
And you're talking.
We're our boss and then here's our.
You're talking to the school liaison. So right now, we have Emily Pullen at the DOE level that's affiliated, she works with the CDC. That's who we called a lot. And then, but they just hired every county, each nurse, there's gonna be a nurse. So we can call that specific nurse for Kennebec County. We don't know their names yet. They're being trained right now.
But they are doing pool testing for us. I mean, they would, to be honest, I think we got this COVID stuff down as far as we had to tell people after a year, so. But, but the actual hands-on helping, we'll need, we'll need a COVID, I mean, and they, they'll say, it doesn't have to be a nurse. It can be, teachers are swabbing in the classroom, it could be an ed tech. A lot of schools are using ed techs to do it. And, and the company trains them or whatever. We do all the follow-up calls because I think that.
And kids, kids swab themselves. They do the outer nostril, it does not go deep, and then they can put it in the vial.
I have a question.
Um, in regards, cause you mentioned athletics. Do you have to have a special pool test just for the athletes? Or if they're already participating in the school, does that count?
Uh, well, again, this isn't.
So some people have encouraged, if you're not gonna do full school pool testing, you could look at certain areas of your school that you wanna pool test. So you could look at athletics. That's what's been talked about. I don't, no, if you're gonna do your whole school, absolutely not. Because they're already in there and you know that those, you know.
But is the whole school?
And then, um, but some, certain athletes are, does that count? Or are they gonna have to be in a different pool as well?
I don't think, no, they would not have to be in a second pool. No.
If it's school sponsored.
If I understand correctly, athletes will have to quarantine if they are not participating in the pool testing.
That is right. And if they're masking during the day, there's an exposure on a team, they will have to quarantine. That is right. But if you're pool testing, you can.
Right, even if, if you're pool testing and you're identified as supposed to, you're pool testing, you still, you, those kids can still keep coming to school, but we're supposed to call families and tell them, but you can't do your sports, you can't do anything at home, you have to stay home. You only can come to school.
School, right, school.
They're almost like essential schoolers, like essential workers. I'm, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, cause it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me that we can say you can come to school, but you have to go home and stay home, you can't go anywhere. You can't work at Hannaford, you can't play sports. That's, I don't wanna make those calls.
But I think when you're looking at, you know, Tim's just amazing point, cause it's, you know, I do substance use work now and just the, the incredible toll from a mental health perspective that COVID has taken. You know, if we wanna keep kids in school as much as we can and keep them from having to be quarantined, honestly. And even though I know these guys, when I first started talking about it, they're like, no, they're like, stop it, we are fired. But I think it's really the right thing to do.
It's just the health.
No, 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 you guys are great. No, it's, I know, cause you're overwhelmed.
Listening to what Jeannie's saying about needing some help, I'm just wondering how, what grades would you need help with? Because if the kids are able to swab their own noses, I'm thinking probably down to third grade can do that.
So the swabbing is the easy part. It's like swabbing label, put it in, you have a little like barcode, you pack them away, you take them to FedEx. Oh, FedEx comes, if FedEx doesn't come at a certain time, then you're, then you, some, need someone to drive the box to FedEx. Then the reports come back.
A day later.
A day later. Then you go through, you answer the phone calls if you get a positive. So the actual swabbing pot, that's nothing. I mean, it's all the, it's all the other pot, you know, it's like, you know, if you say we have a positive at the school, well, then our fun begins. Because then it's the evenings and, and believe me, it's always on a Friday or Saturday. Pretty much though, Easter, yeah. Any, yeah. I mean, it just is. That's just how it's been. And I mean, that's, we rolled with it. But, but yeah, the swabbing pot, that's, that's kind of their, their selling point. Oh, it's so easy. The swab, yeah, the swab pot, like Dr. Baker, the swab pot is, that's a piece of cake. It's all the other pot that, that you get bogged down in.
And if there's a positive, then having to test all those 10, 20, 30 in that pot, in that pool?
And you have to do every, like, let's just use my daughter as an example. If she was in this pool of say 10, would she have, you'd have to do her every single week?
Yeah.
Okay. So I could see how that would get.
And then that's the most positive part. You'd go back and binex them and you, you would stay there and wait. You're not just gonna say, hey, tell me what your result was, I gotta go take care of my diabetic or do this, you know, G tube feed. You're gonna stay there in that classroom and do those 15 minute swaps on that whole group. And then probably call parents, cause I wouldn't exactly as a parent wanna have, have no idea this was going on. So basically it knocks you out for the, a lot, yeah.
If you're a vaccinated person, do you need to pool test? They recommend that.
Especially with Del, the Delta variant.
As an asymptomatic carrier. So the, the concern is, as a vaccinated person, I could be an asymptomatic carrier bringing it in, cause we're in a more of a closed combined, you know, closed space, that I risk giving it to somebody, but I might not have symptoms, cause I've got vaccine.
And that's the power of pool. You're, you're, in theory, you're catching someone who's asymptomatic. Cause in theory, if a child is sick, they shouldn't be in school, they should be home. So pool testing is catching, the, the author sitting here tonight and we feel good, and then all of a sudden we're sick tomorrow, but we've been identified. So pool testing is test kind of the, the asymptomatic.
Is it like a pre-symptomatic?
It, it just is much more sensitive, so.
Could be either way. It could be someone who's carrying an asymptomatic, you never know it. Or it could be pre-symptomatic. And I don't know that there's any data to say which is more likely.
Kelly? So if the assistance that is needed is administrative, would we be able to support hiring someone to help with that for the district?
I, I will just say that, I mean, I don't think we have a choice, but if, and if we make this decision, we don't know. I think Jeannie and Melissa both being very honest about what I would refer to as worst case scenario, what it means in terms of, does, you know, and as I wrote to you guys in my, my report or my recommendation today, the superintendents are all over the map with this. And, but as Jeannie's pointed out, the people who are so gung ho about it, essentially the number of positive tests they've had this year is zero. So when the, when the number is zero, the work is simple. So I, I mean, I don't know. It's, it's, uh, I would, if you make this decision, we're gonna have to make that decision. And, and it can't just be about, we're gonna have to make it work. And I can tell you it's not budgeted for. And we don't have funds to, to address it, but we'll, we'll have no choice. We'll, we'll find it. It may dramatically affect, Megan's gonna love this word, Megan, hide behind Jeannie, sorry. But the reality is this, one of the things you heard me say earlier is that we have a plan, a two-year plan to address social, emotional needs and economic loss. And, you know, so in theory, we could say, we're going to, we have, we have this need this year comes up and we have to, to try to get people to address that need. And we use some of the funds that essentially are earmarked now for year two. And it dramatically changes our plan for year two, but gonna do what we gotta do.
What about the overage money from the 55%?
Um, same thing. We, we have, the school, the school committee's gotta make some decisions. First of all, no, that money's not eligible. The, the school, the taxpayers have voted a cap, not a cap, but they, they voted the budget. So theoretically, just to make it easy to, to explain, if the budget is $12 million, we're not authorized to spend $12 million and one. We're authorized to spend $12 million. So we're getting, what Kelly's referring to, to this public knowledge, in case you haven't seen it yet, is that when the, when the percentage went to 55% for schools after the budget was passed, we're actually gonna realize $407,000 of additional funding here in Winthrop this year, which we can't, we essentially can't spend. Because it's, the budget's already, well, I shouldn't say we can't, we can spend it. We just don't, somewhere, we're not gonna, we can't spend, we can't spend over the budget. I guess is what I'm saying. The resources, financial resources that have been identified, that was based upon passing the budget. And then some additional financial resources came in after. An unlikely grant or something like that, which we are authorized to spend, we're not. Because it's, it's public money, school funding money from EPS.
Are the COVID taxes, I mean, we had COVID last year. I mean, I don't know.
They're all different. It's a little, I'm honest with the top hand, or how Jeannie can tell you, that we, we have fewer COVID tech in back up the faculty than any, right? And I don't know if it, so do you know top hand at the middle school?
We.
Hey.
So.
Hey, you.
Yeah, um, so we have earmarked some of our ESTR funds to support one COVID tech in each building. However, we have not had sufficient applicants to fill two thirds of grade positions. So we currently have one position filled at the grade school. There's still two vacancies, one at the middle school and one at the high school.
There you go, some of them, come on.
No, that's seriously, that is a possibility.
But I just have one clarification question about the amendment. When the kids are at their desk and they're taking mask breaks, that won't be the whole time that they're sitting for hours that they'll have it off. The goal would be that they have it on and maybe take it off to take a sip of water.
Right, that's mask breaks. It's not maskless.
Perfect.
I have a question. Are the teachers gonna be able to take it off to talk to the students?
Yes.
And the students will be able to take it off to talk back, so they can read each other's facial expression?
If they're outside of three feet, issue will be counted.
Great question. Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
How, how will we know in Winthrop, with the cases, like with the status of the Delta variant? I was wondering if one of the doctors could educate me and maybe others, as far as, when you get a test on, how do you know whether it's the Delta variant?
I don't think they're specifically testing each individual one, are you?
No, they, we don't, when, when you get a COVID positive, it's just COVID positive. But then at the CDC level, state level, they will take a certain number of cases and look for the Delta variant. So I, we can't say, we're just assuming, because the Delta variant's way more aggressive and infectious, that the reason we're seeing this rising cases before summer's even ended and people have gone back inside, is probably the aggressiveness of the Delta variant. And so it's, it's a very good question. It's actually a question, you know, that we've had some issues with even in the school. How do you begin to notify, you know, it was, you know, the community that the school has cases. But a lot of it is, yeah, the newspaper. I, Winthrop really stayed out of the newspaper last year. We talked about that a lot at my house. It was amazing. We're like, why is Winthrop ever in the paper? But that's because my significant other works in Belfast and they were always in the paper. So.
When Dr. Shaw did his presentation to all of us, they said that their Winthrop compiler had created a website, I think.
Yes.
Well, can I, I don't know if this is where, are you going to tell where that is, but I have.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Well, if you, I, I think it's on our website, it's not on our website, that all of the supporting materials for tonight's meeting, my report, all the administration reports, those are all on, available online on our website. And I have the link, and it's listed in here, it's, I can tell you what it is, but it's, it's live link on, on the, in my report. So you can go and, that takes you directly to COVID-19 main data. And you can look up county data, you can look up individual town. I've been monitoring Winthrop. And I was told that we were going to get weekly and that's not been happening. I got data from July 18th. And it's cumulative data. So the reason you have to do it on a regular basis, so you can see what, you know, how much it's growing. So we were at 221 cases in, in Winthrop cumulatively on July 18th, and then it went to 228. So we had seven cases from, you know, additional cases from that time to that time. So that kind of specificity is available on the CDC website. And that, that website is, like I said in my report, on the website.
Was that?
I was gonna answer your question though, like in the newspaper today, it did say, and I just wanted, the Delta variant, it's not specific obviously to Winthrop Maine, but state of Maine, Delta variant made up 100% of 35 sampled cases. So they just ran, took, you know, they saw a transmission probably like say in Bangor. They're getting hit hard right now.
I said 100% of them?
Compared to 86% in July, the Portland Press Herald. In June, Delta only accounted for 3.6% of positives. So they're just definitely seeing it increasing.
That is probably an inconsistent piece that I've heard, cause you know, I think there's a lot of people like, the, the numbers are down and I don't think there was a lot of information about the Delta, Delta variant and how aggressive it is compared to speaking. And so for me, I guess it's probably that single factor that's made the biggest impact on me, is looking at the, the number of cases that have increased. And, you know, just trying to make sure that we can do whatever we can to mitigate that. But it is, you know, you think about it, two months ago, oh, what I was saying, and actually Dr. McConnell said this to me fairly recently, that, you know, beginning of the summer, we weren't dealing with the, with the Delta variant. We were hearing about it, but it is now, it's here. And, and you can look at it, if you follow, I follow, every single day I look at the CDC cases. And, you know, a month ago, six, six weeks ago, you were seeing statewide, 35, 40, 50, 60, and zero deaths, zero deaths, zero deaths. Today was 253 new cases and three deaths. So it's pretty substantial.
But the, the data observing it, at least what I was able to see, most of Maine and nationwide, was also a pretty significant rise in cases at this time in 2020.
Yes.
In July, going into August. So that's why I asked the question about the Delta variant. I see the same increase of a little bit more, but how do you determine?
If you put those curves together, just, if you put the, from an epidemiology perspective, if you put those curves together, we're about a month ahead, which makes sense. Cause we're all gonna start, you know, down in other places where they start school a lot earlier, they've been inside a little bit sooner. So if you look at now, if you look at July in places like Florida and Texas, places where they, Georgia, I have a family that goes to school in Atlanta. Look at their numbers and they go to school about three weeks before us. We're all about a month ahead. And that's, but here's the good news. It's not all doom and gloom. The good news is the Delta variant does seem to begin to run its course a little quicker. And so some places where the Delta variant was before us, they've actually seen a subsiding of cases. Still pretty aggressive, still pretty scary, but we've seen a subsiding of cases. And so what, a lot of this is gonna turn out to be similar to influenza in the sense that you're gonna see this cyclical pattern. And we're gonna get better and better at identifying it and protecting ourselves and understanding it. The problem is, is that for certain populations, it's very, very deadly. Influenza is too, but this is still way more deadly. So it's possible that we could see end of October, November, an ability to relax a little bit. We don't know yet. But I think, you know, I think the important thing is, is that we get kids back in school. They need some normalcy. Parents need some normalcy and then we see what happens. Yeah, so.
I, I think it's part of the amendment, the way I had to draw up this, that a district not too, too far from us made the decision to go pretty much like this and said they would revisit it in a month. It's actually, I talked to Tim's district, I'll give them away, but. It's more like five or six weeks. So we, we talked about, we're gonna do it every two. That's what I wrote down as part of the amendment.
Um, just to follow a question to that, can you, as doctors, give us an idea of where are we when we don't need masks anymore? What's that bottom threshold? Do we know the, you know, what I'm saying?
I think we're living in the science. So it's just as we've done this last year and a half, taking it every month at a time, honestly. I don't. I don't.
And, you know, people that really didn't mind masking, and were all pro-masking, when suddenly they said, okay, on Monday, you don't need to wear a mask anymore. You know, people were texting and calling me, what the heck, COVID's over, so now you don't have to wear a mask? You know, I'm like, I know, I know, nobody's happy. So, so it's, yeah, I think, you know, the other thing is, is that, I won't speak too, well, we've seen some cases in healthcare, and unfortunately, those people were vaccinated very early, because they work in an ER. And so what we're thinking now, as they've studied these cases of vaccinated healthcare providers and in ER, not directly in our encouchment area, but not far, it's probably because the antibodies were waning. And so those of us that are pro-vaccine or into healthcare, in a high-risk situation where I would hate to be spreading it to people, we're beginning to worry about our antibodies and wanting to get vaccinated quickly. So again, I'm not sure what really is going to happen. And, and that, again, trying to keep up that herd immunity, so that we can protect one another for those that either can't be vaccinated or don't want to be vaccinated, very similar to influenza.
Okay, but, I mean, you know, people are just wondering, when is this going to end?
Yeah, that, Brian Foster, I have two kids in the school, I have one just graduated, but that's why I ask these questions, because as a parent, I'm sure I speak for many, you know, we were all on board with this, and the students were on board, the kids, my kids were on board with it the first year. And now going into the second year, you know, another child graduated. But I hear, this is going to turn into just like influenza, so when is this going to go away? It's not. So we're going to have the same conversation over and over, is, is the sense that, that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I, as a parent, a seventh grade student, and he's a junior or senior.
Yeah, I don't think so.
That's just the concern.
I mean, I have an incoming kindergarten student, and I'm a pharmacist, and I think it's important to remember, we built, we built up in this pandemic. It wasn't that one morning we woke up and we had masks and distancing and all of these restrictions, we layered them and figured out what worked. And that's how you get back to normal, is you don't decide one night at a school board meeting that tomorrow we're getting rid of everything, right? We decide, hey, let's relax one of these things and see how it goes, and okay, things are going well, cases are still low, let's relax another. And unlike with influenza, like, I think we're moving toward that, but let's also keep in mind that everyone six months and older is eligible for an influenza vaccine to decrease the severity of this disease. And that's their choice to get that vaccine or not. We are not there yet with COVID that everyone is eligible. So I think until a time that all of the student population is eligible, we just keep our mind wrapped around this influenza yet, but we're working toward getting there, where we're having a harm reduction, because we're giving people the opportunity to get vaccinated.
Can you, if you look historically, not that I'm trying to, whatever, and I'm a history major, so I love this kind of stuff, but if you look at historically through all of the plagues and all the things that have happened, influenza's not the only thing. You know, I'm also a rotarian, so it could be polio. There's so many things, so that, I, I think we have a greater reason for optimism with what we have for technology now, and what the, what the medical world can do now. So I think when I hear Jen saying, she didn't say this, but I'm hearing her say, it's never going away, she's right. It's going to be, we lose X number of people every single year to influenza, but it's not what it used to be. We're going to lose, COVID virus is probably never going away, but we, things will happen to allow us to be able to not have to completely change our, you know, our world eventually, but it's not going to happen overnight. So merely before I forget, I wanted to, I apologize, you were here last meeting and shared a great insight for us, but I also wanted to publicly thank you, because you worked really well with us last year to try to get vaccinations for our people, including me. So I appreciate you doing that.
I'm happy to do it if anyone's still looking.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
I have a clarified question. Vaccination, you do not have to quarantine, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't want your age to pass.
Yeah, 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 I'm, oh, if you're exposed, I'm sorry, I was, I'm like, hmm, vaccination, never have to quarantine again. You're right, so if you're vaccinated and you're in a setting where you've been exposed, you do not need to quarantine, that's correct.
Oh, you've had COVID and it's been within ninety days.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page about it, because I hadn't heard that, that's a good chance I didn't hear some of this.
Yes, even if you've been vaccinated, if you're exposed directly, they do encourage, we do, we do encourage testing at three to five days, just to make sure you're not becoming an asymptomatic carrier.
Is it, there is no close contact implies that there's been a positive case somewhere, you can't be in close contact with a non-positive.
Correct.
And once we have a positive, it's, what I'm still being told is that it's essentially out of our hands. All those decisions you're talking about is what the CDC will decide.
That is true, but if you call the CDC and say, we do not have universal masking, maybe, maybe a third of the class had masks by choice, and there's a positive in that classroom, guess what, that classroom's going home.
My point is, they're going to make that decision.
Yeah, just trust them.
Hundred percent masking.
That's what we follow, yes.
Anybody else? Okay, I think.
I'd move the question. So do we, nobody seconded that, that amendment?
Well, it's, yes, it was.
I did second.
Okay, you did.
But before we do that, I want to revisit the open house.
I, I think we should, whatever, you can just choose not to. I really don't want to do specifics at the school committee level. I think the grade school can decide, we have, you have the parameters here, I think the middle school could do that, and I think the high school can do that. Because they're all kind of different, I mean, for, for different reasons, but whatever, I mean, it's ultimately your decision as a school committee.
You had an admin meeting in between this and open house, correct?
Yes, correct.
So maybe.
Uh, no, not at the, grade school is one, Jolene?
Fourth grade first. Fourth first, we have open house.
Yeah, we have, yeah. Yep.
And we'll meet again before that, or no?
No, we meet on the first, September first.
So.
Then we have one next week.
Next week.
Yeah, but they don't meet again, they don't.
Oh, are you saying that this will, this will affect the vote for this? No, I'm saying, I'd just like some clarification on it. I think that it's giving hold. The messaging is conflicting.
I know.
When you're at school, you have to wear masks all the time, but not for this one thing, the day before school starts, where we might potentially expose everybody. At no point that I can think of during school year, when we're thinking about sports or clubs or anything, are we going to have that same density of people in a small space. And all the children that would be coming for the thirty-first are children, almost all under twelve, so they're unvaccinated, and they all. Of course, the children should be wearing masks just like they would be at school, and there won't be anybody guarding three feet rules. I mean, I'm a parent, I won't be coming, like, I just, I don't put, this is the, most people I've been exposed to in a year and a half, other than individuals in my office, but I think it's important to keep everybody safe.
Hi, my name's Kristen, we have a lady in the grade school, and if nothing else, like, I understand everybody's perspective and I respect that. But for me, when I'm thinking about children, my thought is, what kind of example are we setting if we're providing them with a specific expectation? But then all of us show up as adults and we're not being an example to them.
I'm sorry, can you say anything?
Kristen?
Let's see.
Gabri?
Thank you.
Well, I, I would echo what Kelly's bringing up. I was thinking of saying, I'm not trying to mend anything here. I would like to give a recommendation to the administrative team, that they produce a, an open house situation, in which the people who are attending are expected that they will wear a mask. I think you're right, I think you've got to be consistent.
So, first of all, I just, for the amendment, it just says that they will be permitted, it doesn't say, ah, correct. So we could make a vote on this, and would that be separate from this discussion? The reason that I wanted to revisit it was because when I brought that up, Jim's answer was, no masks or no open house. So I just wanted some clarification on that before we move forward.
No, actually, that may be what I said, that's what I meant.
Okay.
I, my personal preference as a superintendent is, that's a one-time event for all the schools, and maybe that's all it takes, like, one wedding. You know, maybe that's, and I don't even know, we haven't talked about it, maybe Jolene's sitting up to say, Jim, shut your mouth, we're going to do it all masked, you know, two-sand, whatever. I don't know, I don't know what they're thinking, so, you know, maybe collectively, that's why I said, let the admin, you guys set the expectations, you have this conversation, and then administratively, we can, we can say that. However, you have the authority collectively to say, you can have open houses, but everybody won't be masked. But then I want you guys to show up at the door and, and battle with the people who don't want to come in. I think it's, it should be the correct expectation. If I were going personally, I would, you know, I'll give you an example and say who did, who said this, but Jolene wants to speak after. At the administrative retreat, I was talking about, if we go with, even if we don't go with masks, which is what our recommendation was at that point, when I visit the schools, I'm not part of that cohort, so when I visit the schools, I'm going to wear a mask. And the, one of the concerns was, was raised that if I do that, which I felt like was setting the right example, but they said, well, people feel like they have to, if you do it, then everybody feels like they have to. It's like, okay, I don't think I understand that completely, but I, I respect it, so, so we'll, we'll decide collectively what we're going to do. I mean, I, I don't wear a mask all the time, but a lot of times I go into stores and places, I still wear a mask, and, you know, get comfortable, used to it, or whatever, so. I guess if I were going to say, my expectation would be that we'd say, masks is strongly encouraged, or masks required, I don't care. But the admin, the building principals in particular might already be having, taking an opinion on that, and we probably need to be consistent between our schools, even though the grade schools are less, I mean, are, are going to have less population of vaccinated people.
Jolene?
So Jim, I know, like, your mantra is that we have three buildings in one system, so I think it does need to be consistent. And I, just to speak for myself, I do not, and am not willing, to make that decision as an administrator for my building. I, I want that directive to come from the school committee, and I don't want that to be a decision I make in regards to masking or not masking at an open house.
Maybe I wasn't clear about that. I wouldn't want you to make the decision. What I was saying is, I want us to talk about administrative, as an administrative team, and make a decision as a team.
Yeah, but I, I still, as a team, and I, that's why I'm saying, I'm speaking for myself, I want that to be a school committee directive for my piece of the administrative team, and my other colleagues may feel very differently, but I'm just saying that would be the way I feel about that.
Mark?
So I agree one hundred percent, but I'm going to step up one step further and say, in support of my teachers, I guess I would want to see open house be passed, everybody come in and be masked. Again, I want that to come from the school committee, so that the people out in the community know that the building administrators and teachers and support staff can support them one hundred percent.
And you feel that's, that would be what the teachers would want?
I do believe that's what the teachers would want.
So that's what I didn't want to do today, but you're fine in doing it, so that's what I'm thinking.
One, one question is, what's the benefit of not having a mask? I don't understand that. I know some people aren't comfortable with masking, but if we're asking our students to be masked, and our teachers to be masked, and our staff to be masked, seems like we think masking is a good idea, so wouldn't we want them to be masked as well? Number two, our goal is to keep kids in school, our goal is to keep our staff in school, our goal is to keep our teachers in school, so wouldn't we want to protect them from possible cases coming in in open house, which could be a lot of people? So I'm just not understanding why no mask is really even that high on the priority list.
So I didn't even say this, because I, I didn't really want to have, this is not really a conversation I would have with an entire audience and the school committee. The school committee sets the parameters, we, we make some decisions. If Jim Osgood were just going to uni-universally, unilaterally make a decision, I'd say that open house should be, kind of what I was saying to Theresa, I'm sorry if I was rude about it, but if I were to decide, then I would say, open house should be masked, everybody just wears their mask, it just makes sense. It's not like they have to wear five or six hours or seven hours like your kids, and, and say, they're going to, but I was like, totally comfortable to say, trust us as administrative team to do that. I didn't really want to put Jolene on the spot, or Mark on the spot, or Sue on the spot, or, or debate it publicly, but if, but it sounds like, maybe it doesn't sound like, maybe it just feels like to me that people are thinking that I'm, that I'm not in support of masking at open house a hundred percent in support of it. But unlike what my administrators have just said, I don't want the school committee to make that decision. I don't think that's in, within your scope, but you can, that's what I kept saying, you can. I have no issue collectively as administrative team saying, we'll make a uniform decision. And so we spent a lot of time on it, so I think we might as well finish that, make that decision, and, and even if it doesn't have to be a vote, I think it's pretty clear.
I think it's pretty clear as well.
Yeah.
I'm just going to second that, if we're making a decision like that here, what about every other activity? That's where the domino factory now is happening.
Yeah.
And this is, this is, you guys don't know, this is a great school committee, they, I think they understand their role as well as any school committee, school whatever, worked with my seventeenth year as a superintendent, so I, I so respect it, so this is just so different, a conversation for me, but it's, it's so different an issue.
Would it feel better if we say we collectively supported the administrations, or just supported the, the decision to do that? I mean.
I think you would, Tim.
Well, I just said the, that, well, we just said that, we're getting discussions that really usually don't talk about here, because now we're, we can keep dominoing this.
Right.
What happens across country in the fall, basketball starts in the winter, every activity that enters the building. We can't make all those decisions right here.
This school committee has, has really been amazing, I guess, I didn't say that even very well. This is kind of a micromanaging type of thing, it's an important micromanage, don't get me wrong, it's very, very important. But it's not typical for this school committee to, to do that. So I, I think this sort of the conversation, the input is great, and we can take it back as administrative team and, and take it from here. But. The can of worms has been opened, so it doesn't matter.
I always bring my can of worms. It's my job. And that really didn't affect what we were, what we're voting on, so let's just make sure that we know that that's separate from what we're voting on. So are we ready to take a vote?
Shall I review the, the amendment?
Yes.
So can I just say that if anybody who's out there worrying about protocol, the way changes can occur at the school committee level are, are multi-layered. School committees can do, move around, change motions to the, to the extent that they want to, without having a formal second or following Robert's rules exactly to the point. Those protocols are in place in case there is some concern about something or not sure. So in this case, Jan made the amendment, and we talked about it a little bit before, and Kelly's agreed to those, to those, that's called the friendly amendment, that doesn't require a vote, doesn't require a motion, doesn't require anything. However, if any of the other people said, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, I want a formal amendment, and I want to vote on the amendment, and then we'll, we'll vote on it, then that can happen. I have not heard, nor do I sense, that there is any objection to the, to the amendment. And I asked Jan before to make the amendment as it's written, because that's what's presented to the public. So in order to have a conversation, you have to get the motion on the floor where they move, it gets moved and seconded. So that's what happened to start it, and then Jan immediately went to the friendly amendment that was proposed, so, shall I read it?
Yep.
Okay, so the recommendation is five days a week for in-person learning, no remote learning options. Masks are required, and you can be more specific about that, but in all places, mask breaks are acceptable at proper distance in the classrooms. Visitors are not permitted in the schools during school hours. Vaccinated vendors are permitted, that's OTPT speech, et cetera. After-school clubs and activities permitted in the buildings. Sports will continue as usual. Physical distancing is not mandatory. Open houses will be permitted. Students that are symptomatic will be seen by the mirrors. Parents are encouraged to keep students home if symptomatic. Each school will have an isolation room. The school, Winthrop Public Schools will join pool testing, and we will revisit these, these guidelines every two weeks.
Do we have to put in their masks upon entering the building and passing in hallways?
I think if we say, I, I'll. I think if we say, um, I'll, I'll avoid that in there, but basically, that's the-
You covered it by doing mask breaks within the classrooms.
Yeah, the masks are required, is what we're, we're saying.
And then the-
Universal masking isn't appropriate term?
Um, and to revisit this, or do we, does that need to be in there, that?
He said it.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
And do you have to talk about the assigned seating?
That's, but that's a protocol, that's not-
I have a question. When we say physical distancing is not mandatory, that's not true.
Yes, it is.
In the CDC guidelines, yes. What happened with the three feet?
It's not required, it's recommended, and we're, and we're subscribing to it.
Shouldn't we say we're subscribing to it?
We're not, because in, in the, let's say, FISED or, or library, where they're not gonna be three feet, they will be masked. So, it's not, well, if it's required, you say, everybody has to be three feet.
I know, Thomas.
In, in this case, we're saying, they don't have to be three feet, but if they're less than three feet, they have to be masked a hundred percent.
You should write that up, that way.
I think he covered, he covered it, because everybody's gonna be masked, Joe, so he covered it that you can take the mask breaks if you are three feet.
You're gonna take some, I'm sorry.
I would say SOP does require that they're gonna not have to quarantine after exposure, that they do have to be masked, universally masked and three feet apart.
That's what SOP someone calls it.
The dust are gonna be that way. He went around with the arms.
But, we're amazing as written decision here, and right now, our written decision says, it doesn't matter. It's what this says.
Because it's re- as, as related to ability to mask break. So, it's not mandatory, it's not mandatory anywhere, it's required, I mean, it's a, yeah, it's a recommend- recommendation.
So, should this say, you follow three foot recommended distance? If I were a parent not on the school board, and I didn't know the discussions that we've had about this, and I would look at this and say, these kids are gonna be on top of each other.
Whatever the wish of the board is.
Can I ask Dr. Baker a follow-up question? So, let's say they're doing what they're saying, and then the kids go to gym, and they're masked up, but they're all over each other, and there's an outbreak. All those kids have to quarantine because they're not within three feet?
Correct, if they're not in pool testing.
So, you're saying, so you're saying that if there's a classroom, and they're doing a project together, and they're masked, they're gonna have to quarantine?
That's what the SOP guidelines say, I reverted that, but it says that they need to be, in order to get out of quarantine, if there's a positive case in the classroom, they need to be at least three feet from each other with universal masking, or pool testing. So, they're, or pool testing. So, they're signed up for pool testing.
A hundred percent, if every student went through a pool test, we don't have to worry about that. But, believe me, that's not gonna happen.
And I wanna make note, six feet in the cafeteria while you're eating. It used to be fourteen feet around, because of positive, it's six feet. That's why assigned seating is very important, and pool testing at that point, um, around a positive.
So, could we change it to say, physical distancing is three feet is recommended? And knowing that, for instance, in the gym, that may not be possible, that they would be masked a hundred percent of the time? Or do we just take it out altogether?
Might be safe. Altogether, unless we explain it. I mean, the point is, we have circumstances where there will be physical distancing. We also have circumstances where they would be together working, but with masks on. They may not get the true three feet, or six feet, whenever they're taking. But, to say outright that there's no physical distancing, that's not right, that's not what we're doing.
No, it says it's not mandatory. So, hypothetically speaking, if Teresa wanted to take her kids into the library, set them all three feet apart, and put them at their own sort of space, um, she might give them masks, she might let them have a mask break in that situation, as opposed to the, probably not.
She's like, no way.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, sure.
Yeah, so, I, I don't know, I'm, uh, I think we're covered, I personally think we're covered with, we're going to have universal masking, we have protocol for when they can take mask breaks, which implies to me that unless those conditions are met, they are wearing their masks. I'm, I, I'm not married to this, I, I know what's gonna end up happening in terms of using it, so say it whatever way you wanna say it. Why don't you, take physical distancing out altogether, is-
Or what if we said, physical distancing is not mandatory, but three feet is recommended?
That she's saying it was already-
Exactly.
I just think that, how about like, three feet physical distancing recommended between all students, or something like that?
I just think if you're gonna write something like this, that it should reflect the, the actual circumstances, not a pie in the sky circumstances. And if the actual circumstances that in classrooms, we would be, very hopefully, doing at least three feet distancing, unless we're doing small group projects for a short period of time, then it should reflect that.
Right.
Well, it's not only that, I mean, just to bet, maybe, so if I'm a student, and I'm at my desk, and I'm taking a mask break, I need to go ask the teacher a question, and I get up and leave my desk and go ask that question, I'm masked.
But this isn't about masking, this is about physical distancing.
So, just leave that, and do a comma, and say, um, three foot distancing is recommended.
So, you're the mover of the motion?
I will, that's okay, you can do that.
If it'll, if it'll move this long, I'm all for it.
So, three foot?
It's recommended.
I believe that the reason is, physical distancing is not mandatory. Three foot, um, spacing is recommended. Which will be what happens most of the time.
This is so funny.
And again, we can revisit this if we need to.
But I think it's important to not have the mandating thing in there because of those small groups.
Sure. Yes?
Where does pool testing come in, if any, or?
Just to clarify, because it, it sounds like you're saying masking and pool testing.
You don't, and you're not really trying to have both to, um, get out of quarantine if you're both on. One or the other.
So, just to clarify, though, like, you guys are gonna have universal ma- masking and the spacing, and then you are offering pool testing to anyone who wants to.
Exactly, exactly right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, pool testing is an option.
Yeah.
For now.
But you don't have to have both to-
Not quarantine.
To, to get out of quarantine, right. So, essentially, those people who are not pool testing, but are masked and distanced, would also be qualified for, right? For not being in quarantine.
At the discretion of the CDC.
Generally speaking.
Could it be something where they have, like, the teachers do a group of four, and it's always that same group of four, so that if they are within three feet, it's those three other children that probably don't meet the three feet criteria? So, that would be a, a good strategy for the teachers.
Anything else, Timothy, you have a very present face.
I'm just-
Processed.
It's a lot, a lot of frustration.
It is a lot. And like Dr. McConnell said, it's probably all gonna change tomorrow anyways. Anything else? All right, are we ready for a vote?
Yep.
All right, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously. Moving on to new business. I move to nominate Joe Petrowski as the delegate to the Assembly for the MSBA Conference.
So moved.
Second. Moved in seconded discussion.
Just appreciate, yeah, I was gonna say, just appreciate the fact that you're willing to do it for us, Justin.
Thank you, Joe, for being the volunteer.
I distracted him so he couldn't say no.
No, we have an intention to do it. All right, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion to nominate myself, Susan Bell, as the alternate delegate to the Assembly.
How about women?
Second. Moved in seconded discussion.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Vote passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion to nominate Michelle Noyles, I hope I'm saying that right, as district behavior interventionist beginning fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Moved in seconded discussion.
Sue.
So, good evening, Sue Fossett, Special Director for VCR. Um, Michelle Noyles comes to us with a bachelor's degree in science education with a concentration in English Language Arts, and a certificate in special education from the University of Maine. Um, Ms. Noyles brings twelve years of experience in special education behavioral settings. She's worked as a behavioral health professional, BHP, as well as a BHP supervisor, a special education day treatment teacher in a special purpose private school, as well as a special education teacher in a public school. Her most recent position was that of Dean of Students. Um, her focus is what I would call RTIB, so Response to Intervention, specifically around behavior in the Augusta school system. The interview team really appreciated her desire to collaborate and communicate with all of our stakeholders. So, we're really excited to lead her board to the committee.
Wonderful. Any questions?
I, I sat, I would just, no, I sat on the, on the interview for that, and she's gonna be Jim.
Awesome.
The District of Jim.
Nice to hear. All right, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously. Welcome, Michelle. And I entertain a motion to nominate Dennis Goyack as middle school math teacher beginning fiscal year twenty-two.
So moved.
Second. Moved in seconded discussion.
Ms. Pilot.
I'm so happy to nominate Dennis, because I've known Dennis for a long time, our kids play ball together. But Dennis is one I've worked with for ten years, and what impresses me most about him is that he has never, ever given up. He started as an ed tech one, and even though he's like, probably close in age to me, he is so proud that he is a teacher, and he's just never, ever quit. And he brings that with him to all the kids that he teaches. He has a way to get through to kids, he has a way to engage kids, and I think that the interview committee was just impressed with the fact that he's just never given up on that. He's, he's a worker, and he's inspiring.
So, obviously, if you haven't figured it out, we have a pipeline of stealing teachers and people from FCD fifty-two, first started with Mrs. Randall, and Ms. Pilot, and now him. I, I also wanna add that, um, he was an ed tech at the middle school when my daughter went through. She was so excited to hear that he was gonna be teaching, because, you know, he was an ed tech, obviously, when, when she had him. She said, Daddy's amazing. I said, okay, amazing is a good thing to hear, but we're just gonna get you.
Awesome.
You wrote a song.
Anything else? All right, all those in favor? Vote passes unanimously, welcome Dennis. Are there any other public comments that anybody else would like to make tonight?
Thank you. Jolene, I just have a shout-out to the secretary and administrative assistant in the grade school office team, Bertwell and Dorian Edwin. We have had fifty-five new registrations at the grade school. And Dorian has told me that that's never happened before. And these ladies are, I don't, I can't even explain it to you. Like, the, all the work that they, you know, are doing in order to register families, and the way they're chatting with families, and families are coming to pick up, you know, registration packets, and, so it's so exciting. But those ladies are working, like, extremely hard, and I just wanted to let you know the exciting news, and also give those ladies a shout-out, because they, they're, they're working, and, and then some, so, very exciting. People wanna be here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great to hear, thank you for sharing that, Jolene.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right, I will go to committee comments, Jan.
I really don't have anything else except for, thank you for communicating with your school committee members. Thank you for communicating with, um, Jim, and, um, just keep the lines of communication open, because it's ever-changing, so.
Joe?
I, I wanna echo what Jim said, so, I think the cooperation, communication has been outstanding for the last couple of years, I understand, with all the problems that we've had. Continue with people to get together and find ways of doing things, and, uh, that's great, that's wonderful. Now, if we just get those kids around town, it's just a separate, but-
Good luck. Kelly?
Actually, can I use this time to ask Erin a question? Hey, Erin, have you gotten many responses to the free lunch application that was sent out early?
Um, I would say maybe ten percent have come back so far.
And are you sending out a second application with the, um, beginning of the school year packet?
On the first day of school, the only ones that we'll get are new students. What we're doing as we get the applications back, we're checking them off, and then we're going to try to, um, get the families to respond again, I don't think we'll do a mailing, but at least, you know, send a, a letter home with the teacher.
I would say, uh, six, nine.
There was five hundred and sixty-two families.
I have a follow-up question, Erin. Is it important for every family to fill that out, even if you know you're not qualified?
Um, if you know you don't qualify, and you return it to me and write, do not qualify on it, then you're checked off the list. Um, because if you know your income is above it, no, it doesn't do any good for you to fill it out.
Okay, but we can just write that on it and give it back to you, right?
It's not a financial section.
And the, the important stuff is to put your name on it, because people write, does not qualify. And even if we put, we snuck some stickers on the back, we still get a ton of them that have no information on it other than do not qualify, so.
And while we have a, a bigger audience tonight, you should, if you, talk to your neighbors, whatever, really, it is really critical to get them to respond, because even though right now, the, the all breakfast and lunch is free for everybody a hundred percent, um, typically, I mean, it's not gonna stay like that. And we get so many pieces of funding, um, based upon our, our participation rates, and it's very confidential, and so really encourage your, your friends and neighbors to, to return those and, and get those into us, we can get more, more funding.
I think my city lost a couple hundred thousand in technology, based on last year's applications not being reached out. So, if you think about that, that costs winter residents money, if, if people don't fill out the application.
Okay. Anything else, Kelly?
That's it, thank you.
Timothy?
I don't know, I'll just go completely off topic, talk about something different. Two weeks ago, we had twenty-one, uh, youth go to the state championships in trap, and it was really nice to see, it was something normal again happening, where the kids were having a great time, and they did well.
That's awesome.
There was an SFP, SFP, thanks for that.
Um, I wanna thank the committee for getting so involved in this, and also the committee for listening and working so hard to put this together. Um, the student leadership team has already, today, started discussing and trying to make decisions about more specific protocols at the high school. Um, so, once we finalize that, I can share that.
Okay.
And the student council is meeting on Thursday to discuss freshman orientation, which will be on Monday, August thirtieth, from five thirty to seven, I believe. Um, so, if you have an incoming freshman, they can come and check that out, and I'll be there, and I'll talk to them, and, um, yeah, I'm excited to see what this school year holds.
You said Monday, August thirtieth, that what, tell?
Five thirty to seven.
Just because I do have an incoming freshman.
Say it one more time, August what?
Thirtieth.
Eight thirty-five, yeah.
So, I'll just make you know this. I don't really have anything else to, to add either, I feel like we've all talked a lot tonight. So, um, there is no executive session, so, without objection, I can declare this meeting adjourned at seven fifty. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.